We will now call to order the joint meeting of the Khatati City Council and the successor agency to the former Khatati Community Redevelopment Agency. Can we please begin with a roll call?
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Show Councilmember Rivers is absent.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will, I invite you to stand and join us for the land acknowledgement, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The city of Khatati recognizes that we are on the ancestral lands of the coastal Mewok, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge the indigenous peoples who have been stewarding and maintaining a relationship on this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land we are on. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on September 10th. Does anyone have any corrections or adjustments to the minutes? Okay.
Move to approve. Do we do that?
Have to do public comment?
Oh, yeah.
So, I would like to invite, if anyone has a comment about the minutes from our last meeting, if anyone in the chambers would like to speak, now's your time. Can we go to Zoom, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Sparks, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Now I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the minutes are approved unanimously. Please bear with me while I read a few announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers: In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as "action items," where the City Council may consider the item. If the City Council considers the item, citizens will be afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. However, the Brown Act prohibits the City Council from taking action or considering any item that is not on this agenda to ensure that other members of the community who wish to provide comments are notified in advance through a properly noticed meeting agenda. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at khatatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Khatati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to enroll with Civic Ready by signing up on the city's website, www.khatatycity.org, under the "How Do I?" link at the top of the homepage. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@khatatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Civic Ready. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is the approval of the final agenda. Did you want to speak about this potential addition, or you want me to talk about it?
Go ahead, Mayor. I have no proposed changes.
Okay, so no proposed changes. We did receive a request that came in on Friday after we had already published the agenda, from a veterans group that's asking us to send a letter of support to issue a posthumous pardon to a veteran who was convicted of some drug offenses, in large part because he had mental health issues arising from his service in Vietnam, and there weren't sufficient support services at that time. So, there's a deadline for receiving these letters on, I believe it's Friday, and since we didn't know about this until after the agenda was published, I'm proposing that we add this to the agenda, just an item authorizing the mayor to sign this letter. But I do believe it requires a two-thirds vote.
It requires four votes, and you need to find that the matter came to your attention after the agenda was posted. I believe you already articulated that, and also that you need to, there's a need to take the action before the next regularly scheduled meeting. I believe you articulated that as well, the, when is the deadline for the?
It was September 29th, which, I guess that's, I don't know what day of the week that is, but that's definitely before our next meeting.
Well, it's definitely before your next regular meeting.
Yes.
So, with that, I think you could make the findings if you, if that's the council's desire.
Okay, I would move to find that this was not known to us before our agenda was published, and that there's a need for us to take action before our next meeting, and move to add this to the agenda. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we got the four votes that we needed to be able to do that. Okay, and then, does, I'm so sorry, we should have taken public comment on that before we voted, shouldn't we have?
Yes, although the public could have, if they had any concerns, they could have proceeded to the podium as well, and I didn't, I didn't see anyone that had any issues.
I would like to give an opportunity if anyone would like to speak on that. Okay, and we'll open it to Zoom as well.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. We have a hand from Lori. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi, this is unrelated, but YouTube is not up, just the Zoom is. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that YouTube was not broadcasting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that, for letting us know about that. I don't think we need to take any other action because there weren't any other proposed changes to the agenda besides that one. So, we will go ahead and add that to, why don't, just to keep it simple, why don't we add that before the first item? We'll just take care of it quickly, probably? Okay?
Sure, I would suggest either the first or the last, either way.
Yeah, okay, let's just do it first. That takes us to, and, I'm sorry, Kevin, is there any way we can, do we have somebody working on the YouTube, or?
The YouTube feed is down. It was working this afternoon when we did testing. I'm not sure what we can do in this meeting.
Well, we do have an agenda item to discuss completely redoing our audio/video system on the agenda, so that's timely. Okay, and just to check with the city attorney, are we okay to continue the meeting?
We are, those are all provided as a courtesy. Have we posted something on the YouTube feed so that people can tell that it's down and that it's available elsewhere? I think that would be helpful.
So, the YouTube, I don't know how technical we want to get here, the feed actually is going, it's just not getting video, so it's a black screen. I'm not sure of a way to post a notice to YouTube that you're describing.
Thank you. Is the audio working?
I'd have to turn on audio on my phone to check that.
Okay, well, maybe we can see if we can get any audio, find out if the audio is going while we do this. Okay, thank you for your efforts. All right, that takes us to citizens' business. Citizen Business and Public Comment for Consent Calendar Items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on this agenda. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2023-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the deputy clerk will alert speakers when there are 30 seconds remaining. Right, I'd like to open it up to Citizens Business and Public Comment for Consent Calendar Items. Yes, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I just wanted to make an announcement, but on Sunday, November 3rd, the Khatati Historical Society is putting on an event, a free community event called "Celebrating the Laguna." And it, there will be a panel of speakers, speaking about the Laguna watershed as a whole, and especially the Khatati reach of the Laguna, past restoration project, ongoing educational product projects, and there'll also be an exhibit in the Khatati Museum at the same time. And I'd like to make sure that all the city council are invited, and all the staff are invited, and anyone else?
Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a public comment? Welcome.
Shelley Berman, Khatati resident. I wanted to take this moment to thank everybody in this room, the residents in the room, the folks who write for the Community Voice, staff, and you, the council. This has got to be a heck of a time to try to be a councilperson. And so, to take on this task when we are divided has got to be difficult. So I want to commend you for your heroism, really. It's something what you're doing, and it's something to be appreciated, and I'm gonna need more time for tears. I'm not, I'm gonna try to get through this without sobbing. So, I noticed that there are folks that are selling food out on our sidewalks, and my concern about that is disability access. City staff came to my rescue and made those ADA access from the street to the sidewalk available, it was being blocked by somebody's sign. I'm concerned about tax dollars. We rely on tax dollars in this town to, and we're a small town, and I would like to be sure that we are getting the tax dollars from these sidewalk businesses. Mambo's Tamales is selling, doing a brisk business in the mornings, every morning. And I don't know that there's anybody that can enforce any code to make sure that we do get tax dollars for that money. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, my team is leaving. Oakland is losing. We can't afford to lose in a small town like this. We can't afford it. I'm losing my childhood. So I'm here, I'm not at a ballgame.
Thirty seconds.
I can't go, I can't go. And this has been such a sad year, because now our tanks, our guns, our bombs are in Lebanon, and we're killing more people. So I would like to ask that we add to our ceasefire resolution, and ask that our taxpayer money is not used to give military equipment to this country of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a public comment? We'll open it up to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. Mayor Sparks, that will end Zoom public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council who would like to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent calendar is approved unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item 10, the direction on future agenda items. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to add an item? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to add an item, and I had a brief discussion with city manager about a youth, a city council internship, where high school youth can come on city council, maybe twice a year, switch six months out of the year, so they can get the experience and knowledge of what it is, what goes into being a city council member.
Okay, is there any objection to adding that to a future agenda? Okay, so we will go ahead and try to agendize that, the future meeting. Okay, yes.
I have one thing as well. I talked to city manager as well about this one, and I hate to do this to you all, but the meeting I missed, two meetings ago, you considered a lengthy resolution opposing Measure J, decided in the end not to approve that resolution. But in listening to the debate, I missed that because I was sick in bed. It was clear that the opposition to the resolution varied between the content, the specific content of the resolution and the actual opposition to Measure J. So I would like to bring back a simplified, shorter resolution opposing Measure J, and because we can't get into the details, I won't explain any more of my reasoning.
Is there any objection to bringing that back as an agenda item? Nope. Okay, so we will also try to, we will agendize that at a future meeting. Okay, and that takes us to our regular agenda, and we have a item, what's, what letter comes before A? Item Z? We're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do the, the letter to support granting a pardon to this veteran. Do you, do you have any, can you give us a brief description of that, or do you want me to? I don't know if you had prepared anything or not. If not, I can handle it.
Yeah, I hadn't really prepared much, other than the item that, that came in, was added as, as a comment received on the agenda after the publishing, so it was added to the website, as well as distributed here at the meeting, so everyone had that in front of them as a public comment. And there is, there's an email that explains the request, as well as a template form letter that's included. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but Mayor would be happy if you want to provide more background.
Okay, and yeah, I've read through the materials that were sent to us, and apparently we got, they requested this from all the cities, but they forgot, they forgot us, so we got it, we got it later, that's why we didn't find out about it. So, I'll just read a little bit from one of these. "A posthumous pardon for Sergeant Penry would acknowledge the often overlooked struggles of veterans with PTSD, serve as a powerful statement recognizing the need to bridge the gap between military service and veteran care. Encourage veterans facing similar challenges to seek help without fear of judgment, and raise awareness about the need for local mental health services and community-enabled transitions for veterans." And there were some kind of heartbreaking letters that were included in this from county administrators back in 1983, writing to the VA, kind of like begging for more mental, mental health services for veterans. And so, I would be strongly supportive of signing this letter. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, so I think we should open it up to public comment. Can we go to Zoom first this time?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this added item. Seeing no hands, that will end public comment on Zoom.
All right, is there anyone in the chambers wishing to make a comment? Right, seeing nobody, be looking for a motion to give the mayor the authority to sign this letter.
So moved. And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passed unanimously, and now we can move on to our printed item A, under the regular agenda, which is the appointment of a library commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, the city council last appointed a person by the name of Cyan McMillan at the May 9th, 2023 regular city council meeting as a representative from Khatati to the Snoma County Library Commission. And he was going to serve the remainder of a four-year term that was already, had already started. McMillan chose not to seek reappointment to the Snoma County Library Commission at the end of the term, which just ended, I believe, in August. And the city then advertised the library commission opportunity, and three applications were received, which were in the packet. The seat will be filled through appointment by the mayor and ratification by the city council, and this appointment will run until August 2028. And the Snoma County, so for a commissioner, Snoma County residence is required, and preference is generally given to applicants who reside within the city, Khatati city limits. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
So, I spoke with all three applicants, and I'm recommending that we appoint Tina Poles to the library commission. She's a resident of Khatati for over 20 years, who has worked for 25 years as an elementary and middle school science teacher, and has run the school garden program at the Occidental Arts and Ecology Center, and was very passionate about, excuse me, passionate about teaching literacy and education, and the role that libraries can play in enhancing literacy. All three, I have to say, all three applicants were amazing. I wish we had three spots that we could appoint all three of them to, because they were just, just fantastic. But ultimately, I decided to recommend Tina. If anyone has any questions or comments. Tina can't be with us tonight because she is on some sort of expedition overseas and out of cellphone range, so, planned trip. Okay, so let's go ahead and, if there's no questions or, or anything, let's go ahead and open it to public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a public comment? All right, we'll open it to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Sparks, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion? Yes.
Damian, I hope that you'll reach out to the other two candidates and tell them about the other opportunities that we have, because maybe they, you know, maybe this was their first choice, but we do have the climate advisory positions that are also available, maybe they want to, or both of them might be interested in those.
Yeah, I believe the mayor and her follow-up with them has already provided those opportunities.
Okay, oh, good, all right. Gotcha.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, well, should I move it, since, I guess I'll move it, since I'm the one recommending. I move that we appoint Tina Poles as our library commissioner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. So, congratulations to Tina, and she will return from the wild country and learn that she's been appointed at some point in the future.
With a new job.
This is where you really have to show up at meetings, or you get appointed to things. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item 11B, which is the approval of professional services agreement with Mark Thomas for the design services for the Highway 116 West Khatati Avenue Intersection Safety Improvements Project, and authorizing appropriation of funds for the project.
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Polyworks Director, City Engineer. We're returning this item. We had discussed potential approval of the contract and environmental review at the last of the September 10th meeting, and it was requested by city council to do a rough estimate of what other comparable consulting firms would charge the city. And then a second request by the council in response to the public was to have a public meeting for, to receive input on the 35% design. And so, staff is proposing that we're, well, we're just, we're looking at planning to have this item on a planning commission meeting in October, November, to just get comments on the 35%. At the September 10th, we did move, take the action on approving the environmental document, and that notice of except exemption has been filed, and everything's in order as far as that's concerned. Now, we're fresher on the project, so the improvements at the intersection of West Khatati Avenue and Highway 116, and the corridor from Redwood Drive all the way past Alder, safety concerns and also improvements are needed to accommodate additional trips from three developments in particular that are planned for the north side of Highway 116, namely the Khatati Villages 1, 2, and Redwood Row. The acute angle of West Khatati Avenue with Highways 116 is a safety issue with sightlines, and then also, there's no left-turn dedicated pocket going westbound to turn onto West Khatati Avenue. And so, these failings of that intersection were highlighted in the local road safety plan a few years back. Identified this, this project of straightening out the intersection, putting its traffic signal there as one of the priority projects. And then following that, earlier this year, with the adoption of the Active Transportation Plan, that further highlighted the need to improve the center section, but was, was created a master plan for bike and pedestrian pathways throughout the entire city. So, this project is an excellent opportunity to implement that piece of the Active Transportation Plan that falls within its scope. So with, with all master plans, it's done incrementally. We can't, like, instantly have 15, 20 miles of new pathways. We have to kind of take opportunities as they come about, but make sure that we follow that overall plan. And so that's what this is doing. The ATP, the Active Transportation Plan, mentions a multi-use pathway on the north side of Highway 116, check, that's in the project. The Bike Boulevard on West Khatati Avenue, as it approaches 116, is accommodated in the design. And then the third element in this area highlighted in that plan is the crossing improvements, obviously, for Highway 116. It was also brought up by Neil Hancock, member of the public, that Caltrans has a bike plan, and it's statewide, or Bay Area-wide. And so there are a couple of projects that they have within the city that are highlighted, painted with really broad strokes. There's a bike lane on the south side of Highway 116 between Graviss, or Redwood Drive and the intersection, and, and that's a paint, a striping project, not too much paving, but to add striping and signage to enable that bike lane. And then the other one that wasn't mentioned in the comment, there's the other intersection at West Sierra Avenue. Caltrans is proposing to do an always-stop there. We have a three-way stop, but they're proposing to have a stop on the on-ramp to Southbound 101, because you've got cars, I guess, just zooming around that corner onto the freeway, and then, and Caltrans is proposing to put a stop sign there. That's not part of the scope here, but I just thought I'd mention it as, you know, it's, we appreciate the bike pan, plan for Caltrans being brought to our consideration. So, now for the, just a brief description of the rough cost estimate. So as suggested at the last council meeting, we, staff obtained hourly billing schedules for the two runner-up consulting firms, and these billing schedules have anywhere from 40 to 60 different classifications on there. And these billing schedules have anywhere from 40 to 60 different classifications on there. And each of the classifications has a range of billing, hourly billing rates. And it's, the titles just aren't exactly, you know, described the same. So there's some subjective subjectivity in matching those up. But what we did was we took the subconsultant costs and the direct costs out of the equation, thinking that those are going to be fairly constant between the proposals. And that was left with around $800,000 or so of purely the Mark Thomas or the, what's, you know, the direct cost for that consultant. And then we got those hourly rates from the other two companies. And we put them roughly in the, where they were in the range that corresponded to Mark Thomas. What we found was that Mark Thomas, the subject consultant, had the lowest overall cost. And the other ones were, went up from there. Now, again, if we were to do this in a more rigorous way, back three or four months ago, we would have asked for proposals from three top companies. And they would have proposed those proposals together, which would have been all slightly different and maybe a different order of work schedule or whatever. And then we could compare those. So this is kind of the next best thing. And it's, but it does have a lot of assumptions that we're making about it. But I think it does provide a sufficient analysis to give us some comfort that we're not an outlier here, that we're pretty much in the pack in terms of what, what we would have gotten from, from other companies. Okay, so there's one last item to circle back on from the last meeting is spoiler, spoiler alert, but since the last meeting, we opened up bids for the Putnam Park, which is the next item. And the bids came in below the engineer's estimate. So we do have money that went back. We're proposing would go back into the unappropriated general fund balance. And so we were proposing before to postpone the Class 1 maintenance project. And we can bring that one back in. So the only two projects we would be postponing would be the trash implementation plan Phase 1 and the gateway project for $10,000 or so. And there is the, we will need to use the money kind of a, for the 25 street improvements project for that. It's budgeted for construction this year. But we'd anticipate that by the time that construction would happen, there would be a funding agreement with the county that would provide funding. And I forgot what the other one was. Oh, that traffic, thank you, the traffic mitigation money from Runner Park. That's sitting in a bank account in Runner Park. So there's good news on that front in that we are able to reserve that Class 1 maintenance pathway project. Okay, so just wrapping up, the recommendation to the council is to adopt a resolution approving the professional service agreement with Mark Thomas and Company for design services for the project, authorizing the city manager to execute said proposal, professional service agreement, and approve any needed amendments up to the approved budget amount. And approving the appropriation of funds to the project account. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
All right, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Scott? Okay, let's go ahead and open this to public comment. We'll go to the chambers first. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to make a comment? Yes, Neil, come on up. All right, welcome.
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd recommend this contract with the way it's going ahead. Very much appreciate that since 2019, the staff have really got the documents in place, the active transportation plan to inform Caltrans that this is an area of concern for Kattati, and there's a lot of work that's going on in that area. We have talked in the past a lot about when projects come before the council for funding, that can the council make input? And I'd just like to highlight, you know, and I've put that white paper out there, that often the process that's there doesn't allow for much input. So in the process, we're looking at quite fairly, it's being authorized. And when it comes back at the 100%, it's, it's the design documents at that point. And of course, the whole process that will happen then is it has to be fairly seen that it is funded, you know, properly, that it's, there's a fair process for the funding. But it's not a time when any comments could actually be done on the diagrams because it is 100% design. So I did identify that there's stages. I'm very pleased to hear that it'll come back to the planning commission for at least a preview of what is intended with a 35% design. Now, the first task, I believe, under this plan that I saw of was that it would be registered with Caltrans. And any input from Caltrans would be input into that design. So there is this first pass that's a 35, it's preliminary 35% design. So very much appreciate this, but should there be any other need for discussion on it? It would need to come back before then. I don't anticipate that, but I'm just pointing out processes with the way that plans go, the way that designs are done. So thank you very much, very much appreciate that there's a lot more visibility on pedestrian safety and bicycle safety with this, this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to make a public comment? All right, we'll go to Zoom, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this item. Mayor Sparks, that will end the public comment.
All right, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. And first of all, I just want to thank everybody on the staff for bearing with us and going through that exercise. And I think, just speaking for myself, it makes me feel a lot more comfortable, given how much higher the cost came in than what we were expecting. But it, going through this process, you know, it delayed us a couple of weeks, but makes me feel a lot more comfortable moving forward. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. I appreciate the public also doing some research and bringing this information. Now, the comment about registering a project with Caltrans, is that something we can do now with the 35% completion? And is there a cost to that? Or do we just, does it just put our project in line with other projects? Or how does that work?
The protocol is to have a 35% project before opening up a dialogue with Caltrans because they won't really enter into a dialogue with you if you don't have anything, at least to that point. And then we would go to the deer process or the review process to get project approval and the encroachment permit. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just didn't know. So once, my understanding, it'll go to city planning commission for review and more comments. And then after that, once it's complete, then we can register it with Caltrans. Is there a cost to that registration so that it's in their project list?
We're proposing to do that simultaneously. We want to get the dialogue with Caltrans going as soon as possible. That's on the critical path because it takes 12 to 18 months to get through that process. So the sooner we get that started, the better. And then at the same time, we'll be having the, the public input on the 35%. Now, remember, we had the concept plan presented to planning commission back in June, which was pretty much very similar to what we're looking at now. So we're getting, we appreciate that the public wanting to have that.
Yeah.
Review of the 35% to see what, what actually came out the other end of that process. But we're recognizing that it's, it's, it's going to be pretty much what we give to Caltrans. So those are going to, moving those forward together.
And then will we get updates to this project so that we know kind of, okay, now it's in the list? It's on with Caltrans and 35%? Will we get updates?
We can provide, yeah, we can provide updates. It's, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a state facility, right? There's a state highway. So anything that anyone proposes to do on a state facility, you have to work with Caltrans. They act like reviewers. So you, there's basically three different ways you can work with Caltrans. If it's a smaller, there's more nuance to this. But basically, if it's a small project, it's through an encroachment permit. And you submit it to Caltrans and there's a small group of, a more, it's a more streamlined process. Not as many groups look at it. Then you pay an encroachment permit fee in theory, right? Or you can do the deer process, which is the next step up. But you submit the 35% plans to Caltrans. They send it to their 20 different departments. They give you comments back. You incorporate those comments. Then you submit a 65% plan set. They all review it. And then they give you comments back. And then you do it again, 90%. It, so it's, it's just like they're, they're reviewing your work that's going to ultimately improve the highway. And then there's a third step, which I don't even want to talk about because it gives me nightmares. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that we got savings on Putnam Park. I think that's great, that, that's good to hear. I'm okay with putting off the trash implementation plan. I think that Vice Mayor Ford said, you know, some things in the works may change that at some point maybe anyways. So, so I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the gateway signage. Where I get a lot of indigestion and grief is anything to do with putting off our road maintenance. We have spent the last decade coming out of a hole that was pretty horrible. And it really makes me cringe to see this on here. So while it has to be on here, I, I would like us to get updates as far as the progress of getting that money to us to replace this money because I'm not okay with us not doing maintenance next year. So I understand what's trying to happen here, but I think we really need to press hard on that. And I'd want to know early if that looks like that's going to be a problem.
Any other discussion or comments on this?
I assume there's no way to like build one corner at a time, be it an encroachment permit?
That's a great idea. I wish there was, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll give a shot, a shot at it. I recommend we adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas and Company for design services for the project, authorizing the city manager to execute said professional services agreement and approve any needed amendments up to the approved budget amount and approving the appropriation of funds to the project account.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion, motion passes for zero. We will move on to we will move on to item 11C, which is the Kattati Cultural Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We had, this is the second discussion we've had for this program proposal. We were here on August 13th at the meeting to provide, to submit the draft program and get feedback. And now we're back here for the hopefully final approval. We took the directions provided by the city council and implemented them into the, into the program and have them here for you to review. Just a little bit of backstory for anybody that maybe missed the first meeting. The proposed program is to provide funding for multi, new multicultural events in Kattati. And it is with a goal to improve equity in the city. And that came from the Ad Hoc Equity Committee in 2022. And it was, it's proposed to be on an annual cycle. And we did make changes to the timeline of the cycle based on the mayor's recommendations. So we currently have it having, not this year, but I guess yes, this year. So having the applications due by November, reviewed in December, and then announced in January instead of open in January or reviewed in January. And then the following year, they would be open in August. But this year is a pilot year, so we're getting a little late start. So the goal is if it's approved tonight, then we would still open it in September to have about a month and a half or two month period of applications. And we do have the application questions, which were not available for the first draft, but they are attached in Exhibit B and would be available. The application process will be an online process in English and Spanish, but we'll make paper ones available for anybody that does want one here at the office. We recommend, or we were, the plan is to have them reviewed, evaluated, and ranked by the internal staff committee. And then take recommended projects to the city council, who will ultimately make the final decision on which grant or grants will be rewarded or awarded each year. And then the rubric is attached that shows the evaluation, the, the process for evaluating each application. Some of the things that were, and it's attached to the staff report. Some of the things that were included were more clear definitions of diversity and inclusion and access. And to include something for a first time, like to make sure that there's higher points available for first time events. And to remove the section on it's relative, relativity to the city's like ultimate plans, like specific plans, because that's really encapsulated in all of them. And then we, we don't have it taking away from the park permit and special events fees. So there is still an opportunity for fee waivers or reduced fees according to that. So if you're not eligible or don't, aren't awarded that, that's still something that other, that event hosts can apply for. And then they are, we, the other big thing that we're doing in here is that we are replace, recommending to replace the old addition donation policy that was, I believe, from 1990 and hasn't been used in decades. And that this would be kind of the new replacement for donation opportunities. And then the financial consideration, which was discussed last time, but it's $10,000 annually from the city council annual allotment. So that's what we're recommending for now. Obviously, the whole program would be based on availability and budget. And then so for tonight, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving the Kattati Cultural Event Small Grant Program and replace the current city donation problem, policy with the Kattati Cultural Event Small Grant Program. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Yes. On the application, on the second page, which would be 145 of the, of the packet, I want to make sure here, they're, they're not numbered otherwise. The second one, it says, how will you be able to host successfully continue your proposed? That sentence doesn't sound right.
Okay.
Could we take out host? How will you be able to successfully continue? Okay, all right, that just didn't read correctly for me. And then on the Rubik's Cube, the, the second Rubik's Cube, Rubik. Yeah, this is, yeah, we'll spin it around here. The very, the very last one, Kattati Local Resident Business Owner. The last box, it says, the application does not live here. I think it's the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
The applicant. That's just a grammatical error.
That's okay.
Yes, good.
I had one somewhat tangential questions on, if you don't know the answer, I'll look it up later. But
Okay.
Our, our fee waiver program, and it says in the staff report, nonprofits. Do you know if we specify like 501(c)(3) nonprofits?
It, I don't think so.
Okay, I might want to revisit that because I don't, I want to make sure we're not giving fee waivers for political events. Thanks.
I don't know if it, it might just be 501(c) something. Like, I do think it has 501, because there's like C6.
Yeah.
Two.
So anyway, it's not necessarily this discussion. I'll try to remember to ask later. Thanks.
Okay, and I had a question about the rubric. As you, you said it would be an internal staff committee that's doing the scoring. So as you go through, I'm sort of, I'm sure you'll find parts of the rubric that So as you go through, I'm sort of, I'm sure you'll find parts of the rubric that aren't that helpful and then other parts of it are. And do you anticipate just like internally being able to edit the rubric next time to make it more useful for you? Okay.
Would love that.
So I'm just sort of curious about the process. Like, would you need to like bring this back for us to reapprove a new rubric? Or can we just give you?
If we put it in the resolution or in the, yeah, in the resolution to let, at a city manager level, make adjustments as needed, then we can forego coming back if we need to make minor adjustments that aren't like extremely different, like making the whole program totally different.
I think that would be wise. Every time I've ever written a rubric, I've ended up needing to change it. Because it didn't really work right the way I thought it would. Okay, any other questions?
Just a clarification, I wasn't sure. Councilmember Ford asked a question about nonprofits. Do they have to be a nonprofit to apply? Okay, good, that's just a clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, the nonprofits are for the fee waivers, which is separate from this, but mentioned in the staff report.
And just a quick clarification, the fee waiver, the ongoing fifty percent is the only one that is it requires it to be a nonprofit. Just new events can apply to have the full fee waiver for a first year. And that can be kind of any event. And then a fifty percent second year, and then they're assessed full fees third year. But then the nonprofit one was for basically every year they can request half off.
Right, any other questions? Comments? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Since the rubric is not mentioned in the resolution, I feel like just direction that it's okay to, to, you know, modify the rubric as needed is enough to make that work. I don't think we need to modify the resolution to say you can change the rubric, is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you for your excellent reading comprehension skills over there. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to open this up for public comment. Can we go to Zoom first, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this item. Seeing no hands, that will end Zoom public comment.
All right, is there anyone in the chambers wishing to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to council. Do you have?
I read the resolves, but the rubric is mentioned in a whereas. But maybe we just say whereas the application and draft scoring rubric or something like that. Just make it clear, we're not dealing with the wording of the rubric here.
Okay, sure, so.
Would that work? Your attorney, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking that, well, yeah, you could do a whereas or under section two, where if the council wants to adopt it and says under approvals. And scoring rubric exhibit B are approved and adopted subject to minor adjustments by city manager.
Yeah, what he said.
That sounds great, yeah. Okay, if there's any more discussion, we're open to it, otherwise we could have a motion. Yeah.
Oops. All right, I'll take a stab at this. Adopt a resolution including the changes mentioned by city manager O bid, approving the Katati Cultural Event Small Grant Program and replace the current city donation policy with the Katati Cultural Event Small Grant Program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this small grant program and adopt the donation policy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's all approved for zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item eleven D, which is award of the construction contract for the Putnam Park Improvements Phase One Project.
Mayor, members of the council, once again Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is to award the construction contract for the Putnam Park Phase One improvements. Improvements to all of the city's parks were identified in the two thousand and nineteen Parks Capital Plan. And this obviously includes the Putnam Park. And so we're following, that was the start to this design. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, city approved a design agreement for the improvements and continued the public outreach that was started with the capital planning. But now that there is a more focused look at the specific park. During the design, the project team consulted with the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation for the selection of plants. And then with the final design, that plant palette was presented to the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation and they approved it. They were in agreeance with it. The, during the design, because of budget constraints, just the costs were so high, the project was split into three phases. And phase one was decided to be the area that most pressing, which is to the east of the ball field and north of the parking lot and to the west of the drainage ditch, and then of course, south of the Laguna. So that area in there is what the subject is here. It's a pathway, it's picnic areas, it's the dog park. It's a open lawn area playfield to the north of the dog park. Just lots of pathways and nooks and places to picnic and so forth, as well as lighting around the pathway is included in the project. Design was, so it was completed and then we put it out to bid in August. And we had a very good response to our bids. Sometimes that happens when you do something late in the, you know, in the fall or the late summer. And we got six bids and we opened them up on September seventeenth. The low bid was twenty-one and a half percent below the engineer's estimate. The next couple were fairly close as well. So it wasn't like they were abnormally low. It was, it looked like a healthy bid. That all of the low three were reviewed for responsiveness and were seen to be complete. There's thirty, seventy, I'm sorry, seventy-five working days to complete the project. And we're expecting work to be started sometime in early to mid October. Now, weather permitting, it's kind of like the Katati project. We started that in the fall as well. And then it rained like crazy in October. And so it kind of put a hiccup in the construction works. But it did get finished in June or so of that following year. So we expect something similar in this case. Construction management inspection services are baked into the design contract. So we're not looking at approval of that contract tonight. And because of the savings, we still can preserve a ten percent contingency and then roll three hundred and sixty thousand dollars budgeted money that's now excess back into the unappropriated general fund balance. All right, so the recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution awarding the construction agreement for the Putnam Park Improvements Project Phase One and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and any change orders or amendments to the construction management agreement up to the authorized project budget amount. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Scott? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just one about that sort of engineer's estimate figure. On the bid tab summary sheet, it says the engineer's estimate is one point, basically one point nine five million. And the low bid came in at one point eight eight, so that's actually pretty close. Was there some like sort of larger scope engineer's estimate that led to what's in the budget this year? There must have been. I'm just wondering, just because on the bid tab summary sheet, it says engineer's estimate one point nine five.
Yeah, I think when we were originally developing the budget, we were pretty early in design. And so, you know, those early design estimates can be more conservative.
Oh, so maybe, right, engineer's estimate actually went down as the design got closer.
Got refined and more detailed, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I had a question about the lighting. I know as, I sympathize with some of the comments we heard earlier where the way this process works is we kind of give input early and then the design gets out and gets made. And then we're approving the contract. So we don't get any like last minute chance to look at the design and the details of it. So I'm just curious about the lighting because we had some issue with the lighting in Pocket Park, where the lights that got installed were way too bright and weren't shielded like they're supposed to be. And now they've been turned off for I don't know how many months. So I'm just curious about, do we have something in this design about the, that the lights on the pathway need to be shielded and not too bright?
We do. We've done lighting here in front of city hall and then at Katati Park. And what we've learned is critical is to install dimmers on each of the bollard lights. So that's the ultimate control that we have is to, you know, bring that, the intensity of each light individually down to where it's not, you know, to where it's acceptable. And the way the lights are designed, they are louvered on the top, so they don't let any light go up. It's just down into the side. But that would be our main barrier about, against, that would be the dimmer switches.
And are they not, hopefully they're not the same design as the ones that are in Pocket Park? Because those ones don't have a shield on the top.
They would be identical to those.
So those lights are, those lights suck because they're from a light pollution standpoint, because they don't have a shield on the top to prevent the light. If you look at the angle of the light coming out from the bottom part of those lights, it's not shielded. So it goes straight up into the trees and messes with wildlife. So is there anything we can do to add a provision that the light needs to be shielded? So it's directed only downward?
We absolutely can.
Okay.
We can, there's a submittal process where the contractor says, hey, this is what I'm going to buy. And then in that submittal process, staff can step in and say, hey, we want extra shielding around the light to prevent that from happening. So we'll make a note of it today.
Okay.
To give that extra scrutiny to that submittal.
Okay, great, because especially because those pathways are going to go right next to the waterway. And we're planting new nice native plants and trees. And hopefully it'll revitalize that area a little bit for wildlife. So we want to do everything we can to keep the light pollution down in that area.
And Mayor, I think in this case, and Craig, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The bollard lights are on the path from the parking lot to like the restroom. But not on the, there's no lighting on there because I don't think we wanted to encourage people to be out there at the middle of night anyway. But there is, there are the taller lights in the parking lot. So like, you know, the street lights that you see in residential areas. I believe those are, and there's a couple of those in the parking lot. And I think there's only one bollard light in this phase of work, which is on the pathway that goes to the restroom.
Okay, well, that alleviates my concerns somewhat. Okay, thank you. And then I had one more question, which was about the, I think you answered this, but one of the documents that was posted on ClearGov had the pathway along the east side of the park labeled as part of phase three. But it sounds like it's actually part of phase one. I think maybe that document was just out of date and I just want to double check. Are we doing the pathway along the east side of the park as part of phase one?
Yeah, we, there was some earlier documents that we took down because they were earlier in design and they weren't reflective of the final version that we actually bid. So that was replaced with a new phasing map.
And then in the staff report, it didn't mention pathways. It listed out like the, so I just want to double check. Okay, those pathways are part of it, okay. Yeah, question.
Yeah, I had a question on the gopher wire. Is it seventy thousand square feet? Is that going to be installed in the whole section to the right of the baseball field? Is that the full section, the seventy square feet of gopher wire?
The defined grass area in the dog park, it'll be under there to protect the lawn there. And then the lawn area to the north of that. We'll have the gopher wire.
Okay, I guess I'm just.
But then, you know, you have the meandering pathways and planter areas. Those will not have gopher wire.
Okay, the meandering pathways have other kind of like plants and shrubs that think will not have. Okay, so just the lawn area? And only the dog park area or in front of that?
The dog park and the open lawn area.
Open lawn area in front.
That's unfenced.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, since those friendly little gophers that we have in our community don't seem to understand areas like here's the dog park area and here's the lawn area. Is there a reason we wouldn't put it underneath the pathways? Because I've walked on pathways before and those lovely little gophers like to dig there also. So they kind of start going down underneath and start coming up. I would hate for them to wreck, you know, all the new pathways.
I, it's not in the design right now. Those pathways will be, will have a base, a pretty thick base of gravel and then have decomposed granite with a binder in it. The planter areas, those plants might be susceptible to it. And so what'll happen, what's recommended is putting baskets under those. But every time you add these layers of additional measures, it just drives up the price. So I think we're going to, this is what's proposed. And if that really becomes a problem later, we would kind of retrofit it, you know, in the future. Like Putnam Park, those planter areas do not have gopher baskets in them. And they're doing okay, they're doing pretty well.
Can I ask it another way? So this layering that you're, we're talking about the granite pathways. So we have a granite pathway out here going up over the hill. And so does that have the layers that you're talking about? That would, because I don't see any gophers coming up on those. So are we talking about the same thing or something different?
Yes, that's a construction that we're looking at.
So where we might see it is at the edges of the pathways. And then.
They're very unpredictable.
Okay.
Beasties.
Well, yes, they are. So we need, we need the gopher guy. All right, yeah, but, but what I hear you saying is because of the layers that are put in there, they're not likely to disrupt the path, which I would worry about, you know, from people walking on it. But it's possible on the edges that there might be some disruption from our friendly little gopher friends.
I'm not an expert on this, but that seems like a good guess.
Yeah, what we've, I mean, what we've seen with that granitecrete type pathway is that they just can't burrow through there very easily. So it's more along the edges in those areas that you might see some issues. As Craig said, in Katati Park, we don't have any gopher wire anywhere in that park. And there are gophers and they tend to hang out in the lawn, or not hang out, but they tend to traverse the lawn area as they're on their way to other people's backyards. That's where they tend to go. And we have a, you know, we have a gopher catcher. And that guy, that guy's told us on several occasions, Ashley, Ashley gets all the great gopher pics. But they, they don't like the lawn areas necessarily. They just use it as a area to traverse to get to where they want to go, which is people's backyards. That's where they would rather be because that's where all the good stuff is. But they, I mean, they cause a lot of damage on the way, as you know.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we will open it to public comment. I have a comment card, Jenny Blaker, if you'd like to come speak.
Thank you. Well, I wrote a letter to the city council yesterday and then I got a response from the city manager this afternoon, which I didn't actually, I just got before I came to the meeting. So I'm a little, I wonder if we could have a little bit more detail because what I read yesterday in your packet didn't seem to be saying anything about the native plantings. And at ClearDoc, at ClearGov, there's two separate maps. An earlier one, which is very indistinct and fuzzy and hard to see, that has a meandering path on the eastern edge with vegetation and vegetation alongside Myrtle Avenue. The other one, the newer one, which I hadn't seen before, just had this dead straight path, no obvious vegetation, no obvious waterway. And it looked as if the path is like really close to the bleachers at the edge of the sports field. And it looked like there was no room for any planting except that the summary, there was a summary with a chart showing some plants and funding for plants, but it wasn't clear what those plants were or where they were going. And then I had this. And then I had this email from Damian listing some of the plants that have been approved by the Laguna Foundation, which is great. But I'm just a little bit kind of confused as to as to what's happening. Because if this is Phase One and the main focus is that walking trail and the waterway, I'm not seeing much detail about what's being included. And we had originally, I think back at 2022, we had a discussion with members of the Laguna Foundation and council members Ford and Sparks. And we walked it and we talked about the feasibility of doing native plantings and also possibly getting plants from the Laguna Foundation and having volunteers do some of the work. And we had, I know we had a discussion at one point with the city manager about owls being used to control gophers. And I'm just wondering kind of what happened between then and now. And if you could give a little bit more detail about how those ideas are being incorporated here, particularly the idea of a meandering walkway.
Thirty seconds.
Shaded by native trees and with plants like sedges that would help to clean up the water quality, especially from the dog park, before the stormwater runoff goes into the Laguna. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will finish up with public comment and then take a chance to address things after that. Yes, come on up.
Yes, good evening, council. Just got a couple of technical questions really with us. And having walked that pathway or watched what happened there last year. We, California does have a very strong stormwater plan or a stormwater sort of planning system that any, any large earthquake, earthworks past October the 15th should have a stormwater plan so that there isn't runoff into the creek. So first of all, I'm just wondering, has that been put in place this year? Because it really didn't look like the contractors last year understood that. Isn't, isn't a private type of plan, which would require the stormwater plans to be in place? So that's, that's really question one. Is is there, will it follow all the best management practices for Sonoma County and for California as far as stormwater? The second one is, we've seen a lot of waddles that are put out, which don't get cleaned up by the contractors. And I've seen this across the county and other places that are plastic. And the intention of the waddle is really to protect the streams. And then there's plastic that I pulled out of Catati Creek here some years ago. That is essentially, it's just a death trap for any wildlife and stuff. So how are we, are we going to really emphasize that the waddles should either be removed? I know there's some still there from last year that are plastic that get into the ground. So can we please make sure that any waddles are either tracked or that they have a biodegradable fabric when they're placed? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comment. Welcome.
So there used to be a bridge on this. Is the bridge gone? And that would make me happy if it were. The bridge over to the other side, is that not part of the plan? That's my first question. Second question, I agree that gophers don't care. And I would go pay a little more and get the whole, while everything is dug up, put down the gopher wire everywhere if you don't want gophers. That's, that's my thought. And also, I'd like to echo what Neil was saying about the waddles. They're everywhere there and they're being buried and there's a lot of plastic being buried. And 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 I would like to invite owls also to come to the park and take care of things naturally, but but you can't, they might not accept the invitation. So gopher wire may be the answer. But when everything, going back and retrofitting doesn't, I don't think that will ever happen. This is our one chance to get it. To me, this is, and it's long incoming, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from people in the chambers? Can we go to Zoom, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment on this item. Seeing no hands, that will end public comment, Mayor Sparks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, I heard five different questions from, from the comment. Can, can we ask the staff to respond to them? The first one was about, do we have any more details about the the plantings? I think what I was hearing is the details about the planters are not showing up on the diagram that was added to the agenda. So is there, is there a landscape design plan that could be shared with the public? Or with more details about where those plants are going to go in?
There is, and admittedly, staff, I could do a better job updating the ClearGov site. But the plans are available and I'll go ahead and load them up onto the site. During bidding, the bidders to be on the bid plant holders list, we had to have them purchase it. And we have had to control that to make sure that they all had the same information to bid on to make it fair. But now that the bidding's over, we could publish the completed plans onto our ClearGov site.
Okay, great. That's awesome. Thank you. And then the second question I heard was, are the, I think if I'm understanding correct, are the construction, the people who do the construction going to have best man, best practices for storm, managing stormwater runoff while they do the construction?
Yes, the state general permit is triggered for any project that disturbs an acre or more of land. And so we made that very clear in the bidding documents as this was in that category. It was over an acre. And so a sweepy stormwater pollution prevention control plan is required. And they have to register with the state, which brings out state inspectors and doing water quality analysis. It's quite involved when it's over an acre. Catati Park was just a smidgen under an acre, so that fell under city jurisdiction rather than the state.
Great, thank you. And then for the waddles, can we write into our instructions to the the contractor that we don't want the plastic things used or that?
So that's a really good, a really good point. And we've talked to our consultant about that. And she mentioned that it's not so much the plastic bottles. It's to remove them after their usefulness is over, which and not, I mean, have them in place for only a few months, but not year after year after year. And so we've gotten into the practice of doing that for city projects. And because our city standard has the plastic ones, we're about to reissue our city standards to be incorporate more natural biodegradable materials. But right now, it's, there's language in there to abide by city standards. And so that's what they're going to be using. And there's no real drawback to them unless they're just forgotten about. And as, as one of the speakers mentioned, kind of blend into the ground and the plastic breaks apart and everything else. So the, the strategy is to take them out before that happens.
So could we, could we build into this plan that we're not going to close out the contract and and pay them until the waddles are gone?
That'll be on, that's, that's usually on our pension list is to, you know, there's, there's, there's things in front of that. The catch basins and waddles, and we're saying those have to go. The project's over.
Okay. And then a fourth question I heard is, is the bridge gone?
Yes, the bridge is not part of the project.
Okay. And.
And I'll just, I'll just add on that in case anyone's curious why the bridge is not there. It's because we need to evaluate a slightly different crossing orientation. The orientation that was proposed in the concepts does not work because the other side of the pathway, the side of the Laguna pathway that the bridge would be landing on is actually below the flood zone. So if you build something in the flood zone, it would, it's just not permitted generally. And you'd have to build up a large ramp on both sides of the bridge landing to be able to land on that side of the creek. Except you build it up so high that you'd be looking right in someone's back fence as you cross the bridge. So it's impractical for a variety of different reasons. So we're looking at, we need to look at some other options for, we haven't abandoned the idea of a bridge. But we need to look at some other options for ways across the Laguna.
All right, thank you. And then the last question I heard was, can we, can we put the gopher wire everywhere? So i- is that something we could explore with the contractor? And ask them how much additional cost it would entail to to lay that gopher wire out farther while they're down there digging around anyway?
Well, blanketing the areas outside the lawn with gopher wire might not be the best approach. It might be these planter baskets. We could certainly ask for a quote, a change order to install baskets to protect certain plants. And then, and in a, well, we could ask them for doing that underneath the pathways as well. So if that's what you'd like us to do, we could certainly do that.
It seems like there's some interest in that on the council.
Good.
No, not from you. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I I agree with the comment that was made. We want to do it once, do it right. I haven't gone out and looked that closely at Catati Park to see if our friends are all over the place there. But, you know, while we've got it all dug up, it seems that, it feels like, unless you tell me it's, you know, $500,000 to add a little extra gopher wire while we're there, they've already got it all uncovered. I think that would be best.
Yes, go ahead.
I feel like we're trying to engineer something without knowing what we're talking about. And gopher wire is not appropriate in areas where you're going to plant annuals or you're going to plant anything that requires more than a one inch hole. So it's just not the right solution for everywhere. So baskets around bigger plants is much, makes a lot more sense and things like that. And we've got that, that, you know, granite with the binder in a bunch of places around town. And if we haven't seen damage, if we haven't seen damage right across the street here at Veranda Falletti Ranch, there's plenty of gophers there. So I'm not worried about the paths and I don't think it's worth extra expense to run, run gopher wire under them when we've got years of experience with it and don't have any gopher issues.
I mean, I'm okay if there's an alternate solution. But what I don't want to have happen is have us, you know, spend all this money to do this and then have our friends come wreck it all.
Right, no, I agree with that. I agree with that.
So whatever the solution is, I, yeah, someone who knows better, I'm okay with that as an alternative.
Perhaps maybe what we could do is investigate with the contractor to just like communicate to them how important the gopher issue is to us and see if there's any, if, let them know we're open to change orders if they think there's some solution that would enhance our gopher safety.
Don't give us a price.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be willing to do it.
Okay, so I think that was everything I heard from comments. Is there any other discussion among the council or other points or questions or concerns? Last chance. I think we've already done public comment. I don't, I don't quite want to reopen the whole public comment, but I'd be happy to come talk to you afterwards. Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yes. All right, make a motion. We adopt a resolution awarding the construction agreement for the Putnam Park Improvement Project, Phase One, and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and any change orders or amendments to the construction management agreement up to the authorized project budget amount.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we, that passes four zero.
Happy to see this moving forward.
Yes. Going to be great to see that other side of the park get improved.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to move on to item 11E, which is award of the contract to Coda Technology Group for Catati City Hall, City Council Chambers Audio Visual Systems System Upgrades. Yes.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this, this contract is to fix our YouTube stream and very, very timely. We're very on the ball around here. So the original Chambers AV system was installed back in 2014. And as we all know, during COVID, there was some significant changes that were made. I mean, primarily bringing in Zoom and from a technical perspective, that resulted in a bunch of changes to the system. So we have, you know, currently our system is, it has some pieces that are antiquated on the broadcast side, the broadcast part of the system. And on top of that, it's also sort of put together. It was put together to accomplish what, how we want it to work today, but not, it's sort of pieced together. It was pieced together that way. It's not, it wasn't designed that way, is I guess what I'm trying to say. So because it wasn't designed that way, there's a lot of extra stuff it has to do to accomplish what it accomplishes. And if you have a chance to build the system from scratch to do exactly what you want it to do, it could be a lot simpler to operate. And simplicity typically translates into reliability. And that's ultimately what we want is a simpler system to operate that's more reliable, doesn't have as many issues. And we got into contract with Coda Tech and they, they designed this system. They do many of these systems all around the Bay Area. The engineer's estimate for the system that went to bid was $260,000 for the, for the base bid. And when we put it, and I'll also say that for the budget for the year, the city council approved a budget for this project of $306,000. And the lowest responsible bidder was, was Coda Tech. And I'm sorry, the designer was Shalick. I think I said Coda Tech earlier. Designer was Shalick Collaborative. Coda Tech was the low bidder in this process. So the lowest base bid was $253,572. There also was some additive alternates that were just pulled out because we weren't sure how the bids would come in. And we wanted to make sure we had some potential options to reduce costs. They add alternates cumulatively or $14,052. So if all the bid alternates were exercised, the total project would be 267, 624. And including the, some design work that occurred this fiscal year, as well as construction management dollars that are still yet to be expended to manage the construction project of about $10,320, the total project would come in at $277,944. This is without contingency, but it's the base bid plus all bid alternates plus construction management. So in terms of construction schedule, how this would work is if the council awards this contract tonight to Coda Tech, is they would, they would build the system offsite and they would fully test it offsite. And then December, after our last council meeting, they'd come in and just change everything out. And then the plan is that they'd be ready, we'd be ready for the first meeting in January. So from a public perspective, you wouldn't really notice anything. But you would take advantage of that long break to change out all the equipment. And this is primarily a replacement of our broadcast system. That's the primary goal of this. Some other related equipment isn't part of this contract, like some of the sound system, which is still operating perfectly fine. And some of the physical hardware, like microphones and that sort of thing. So we're, it's mostly back of the house broadcast equipment and all new cabling to make sure that that's clean and works well. And I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
New cameras?
New cameras in the chamber.
Yeah, and it probably goes without saying, but you said they'll test it fully offsite and then come and replace everything. And then I presume they'll test it again once it's here. And then, can you lean on them to have somebody here at our first council meeting when we're using the new system? It's probably not in the contract, but.
No, actually, I think it is in the contract.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Even better.
I had a related question, which is, it was important to me that the, the people who designed the system are not the same people as the ones that are installing it. Are the designers going to have any, any role in testing the new system? Because I would think that would be great if we could get them and to check off and make sure it actually has been built to their design.
They will, they will commission the system with the building. They will, they will commission the system with the builder, with the contractor that builds it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things that is actually really important in this type of computerized system is that there's a certain kind of controller that they have a program, that the winning contractors, one of the bid, one of the qualifications for the people that get bid on the project is that they add people in-house that can program these controllers rather than using a third party, which I think they've found in their experience in other systems around the Bay Area that if you're bringing in third-party contractors to actually program the equipment, that's when you can have problems and then the people don't, they don't come back if you need them in a timely manner. So these people are on staff with this, with this bidder. And that's a really long explanation for your, I think, pretty simple question, which is yes, they'd be here for commissioning. Yeah.
I don't think they build it offsite and then bring it in, so we'll start January. So when they build it in their location, I'm sure they have all the best high-speed interconnectivity. Do we, do they build it to ours or is our connectivity also to the high standard? Is there going to be?
Yeah, so they, they'll take the broadcast system and they'll completely connect it to, they'll, they'll connect it all up with basically all of the parts that we are using in our system, most of which is the parts they're buying for our system. And then to the extent that they don't have, you know, I don't know, like audio equipment or whatever, they'll, they'll connect it to something, you know, basically, I mean, essentially the same as what we have in the chamber. So, you know, it may not be exactly the same model of every other piece, but it'll be 90, probably 95% plus the actual equipment that will be, that will be used here, plus some other accessories that they'll have to connect to. And it just helps them test it. So when they get here and they actually plug it in on site, there's always going to be something that doesn't work quite right, but it really minimizes the chances of that happening. And then that's why they're all here for the commissioning and testing to iron out any other wrinkles that do show up.
Are they satisfied with the components that we're keeping? I would hate to get into a situation since we're keeping some components and we're, you know, replacing other components, getting into a he shed, she shed, you know, kind of, oh, well, it's your thing that isn't working. Our thing is working right. So have they evaluated what we're keeping and are okay with that?
Yeah, we tried to keep it as clean as possible. So the, the broadcast, I can only think of one piece of equipment, no, two pieces of equipment that we're keeping because they're basically brand new. You know, but otherwise, and ironically, this, this contractor provided those two pieces of equipment. So it actually, you know, the world of AV equipment, there's not, not a ton of companies that say, you know, handful that can do this kind of work.
And likewise, Mayor Ford, I was going to ask that they be here the first night because that's always when, when things happen to us. So I'm glad to hear that that's in the contract.
All right, any other questions before we go to public comment? All right, can we open it to Zoom first, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this item. That will end public comment on Zoom. Thank you, Mayor Sparks.
Okay, we'll open it to comment in the chambers. Yes, step right up.
Yes, good evening, Council Neil Hancock. Very much appreciate the system and use it a lot. It's very nice to be able to both see it as it's happening and also to be able to afterwards step into it and catch up with what's going on. The one question I'd ask, and it's something I bring up a lot when it comes to cyber systems, is the, the aspect of cybersecurity. And it would seem pretty clean with the system, but I think it's very useful generally to make a statement with something like this, just in case there's anybody reading it, that it meets a very high level of cybersecurity. Probably didn't have a time today to listen to the chairman of CrowdStrike, who was hauled up before Congress for some of the things that failed. And you can't prevent all failures, but what I would hope with the system is, is that it's virtualized, that essentially it doesn't practically touch anything of the rest of the system in a virtual environment. And so those can be built into the system nowadays and a lot of discussion is about that. I know the cities talked about it with SCADA systems, but there shouldn't be any part of this system that really can leak over or be an opportunity to leak over into the other parts of the system. So it would just be nice to have that statement, I think, on something like this, if it in fact exists. But my question is really, is just how has the isolation, the virtual isolation, virtual networking, yes, there might be a point of contact as it leaves the building in the router that goes there. And I think this was brought up by Congresswoman, by Congress and by Rivers, Councilperson Rivers, when, when this first of all came up for a discussion. So I think it's just something, we are in this world where we need to pay attention. It is very much, we are all on the front line with this. So just raising that as a, as a question. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. I'm sure Councilmember Rivers will appreciate being promoted to congressperson. All right, is there any more public comment in the chambers? Okay, can, can you address the question about the, how is cybersecurity addressed in the, in the documents?
Well, we, we, you know, I will say just as a general statement, you know, we spend a, a significant amount of time on cybersecurity. We're always working on, you know, various aspects of cybersecurity. And as, as Neil mentions, you know, the ideal situation is that you just have a, basically an isolated system that can't touch your, your city networks. It does touch, I mean, it, you know, shares a internet connection, goes through a firewall, like with the other, you know, at least the streaming part of it does. But I, I can't actually think of other ways that it gets into our network. But I certainly, I understand the comment. And as we start designing or start working on the build of the system, we can make sure that if there are any switches or routers that are in the system that somehow touch the city network, that we can make sure they're all completely isolated, you know, so there's no way traffic can cross over.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? I'll open up to discussion amongst the council. Are there any discussion? I was glad to see the bid come in. We had heard some kind of scary numbers in the preliminary stages of this and it came in much lower than, than some of those. Yeah.
Yeah, so just, I'd, I'd like to appreciate the effort to figure out exactly what needed replacing. So we didn't spend the original half million we were talking about. Thank you.
All right, well, hearing no further discussion, I'd be looking for a motion.
Jeez, okay. Like to adopt a resolution awarding the construction agreement for the Katati City Hall, City Council Chambers Audio Visual Systems Upgrades and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and any change orders up to the authorized project budget amount.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously and I feel like I should make a motion nominating Councilmember Harvey as our motion reading MVP for the night. Thank you. Okay, we will turn this over to city manager for the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, council. So just a reminder that the neighborhood meetings are coming up, September 26th and September 30th, both at 6:00 PM in the, in the police community room. And we have beats two, five and six on September 26th and one, three and four on September 30th. Another reminder that the applications are out for people wanting to serve on the police, our Community Police Advisory Committee. Excuse me, applications are on the city website and are available through October 3rd. And we had a creek cleanup this past Saturday, the city hosted, which was attended by 37 people who collected 68 five-gallon buckets of trash and three car tires. And the area covered, covered extended along the entire length of the Laguna de Santa Rosa through the city. Basically, there's three locations, Pocket Park, Benson and Gravine Speedway were the staging areas for each of those three areas. Turnout was very high and everyone was very positive, enthusiastic. I think we have some people in the chamber here tonight, actually, that were, that were there helping out. And we look forward to hosting this event again next year. So we just talked about Putnam Park. And like the recently upgraded Katati Park, Putnam Park will receive significant improvements in the coming months. So we're expecting the contractor hopefully to mobilize soon, weather permitting, and then work extending through next spring. And another project that's about to get going is a sidewalk gap closure project. And this extends the West School Street pathway from Clifford to Maple and closes gaps from Putnam Park to Park Avenue, then along Park Avenue and a small stretch on Olaf behind Fletti Ranch. And the Katati Warner Park Pathways to Leadership Citizens Academy is gearing up for its initial class on October 3rd. And as I think the council knows, we're sponsoring positions for Katati residents that class. And an interesting program is also launching, it's called in, in the county, it's called, it's called Keep People Housed Funding Program. And this is for all Sonoma County residents and it's going to start up in late, later this year, early 2025. It's a $3.9 million, two-year pilot program that aims to prevent 350 to 400 local households from becoming homeless. So it's trying to stop people from dropping out of housing into homelessness. And our community development staff are working to ensure Katati residents are aware of how the, how to access the funds. So we're going to be starting to push messaging materials out to the community once this program launches in the very near future. And the program provides financial assistance, housing stabilization services, legal referrals to households that are most at risk. And it is going to be administered by COTS and with funding from a variety of sources. There's a nonprofit called All Home, which is contributing most of the funding, 2.6 million. And there's some smaller amounts of money coming from the entitlement jurisdictions. So that's Santa Rosa, the county and City of Petaluma, that total of 1.3 million. So that's a total of 3.9 total funding for the program. And like I said, we'll be getting word, the word out soon, once that program is launching. The Housing Fair happened back on September 14th at the Katati Warner Park Library. And that went well. The event featured vending and tables from several countywide service providers, including both cities, that's Katati and Warner Park. The library, the Napa Sonoma County ADU Center, Losiennes Recology and the Community Development Commission with the county and those others too. Legal Aid of Sonoma County partnered with Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California and provided a seminar on landlord tenant rights focused on fair housing and tenant protection laws. And the estimate was we had about 150 people at the event. And, you know, we continue to hope to build on this next year with the annual event. It's actually part of the, our commitment and the housing element as well to work with local jurisdictions to have these events every year. We also recently had a, our first community meeting for 120 East Katati Avenue for the affordable housing development that is just kicking off there with Free Bird, who is our partner in that project. And it went, it went well, it was well-attended and we got some great feedback at the meeting. The presentation is posted on, the video of the meeting, the presentation part of it is posted on our YouTube channel. And then this past Friday, we also had our September Free Open Ranch Youth Day at the, at the ranch. We had 17 guests at that. And then Saturday, the same day we were doing the creek cleanup, we also hosted our first ever Grub in the Hub Food Festival, along with our last free summer movie in the park. And we had 25 vendors, two live bands and approximately 500 guests in attendance throughout the day. So it was a good turnout for a first-time event. Come, come in October, we have, coming up in October, we have our second year of our fall festival, the Verona Fletti Ranch. And we'll host the fall, or the festival on Saturday, October 19th, Friday, October 25th and Saturday, October 26th. So three separate days that we're hosting the festival. It includes crafts and games for children, visits with animals, a pumpkin patch to pick out your pumpkin, wreath making class, live music and more. And we'll also be hosting a special edition sensory friendly hour on Saturday, October 26th as well. Later in October, we're going to have our fifth annual Katati Candyland Trick or Treat Event in La Plaza Park and throughout Katati. And so that's going to be from two to five on Halloween, when the little ones can go out there when it's still daylight, before, you know, they get them all sugared up and then get them back home early. And then there's going to be maps and a bunch of businesses that we're, that are partnering with that I'll be participating as in past years. And it should be a good, great event. But with that, I will stop, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much for your report. That'll take us to council member reports. Does anyone have a report?
Yes, September 14th, I went with a, on a Katati walking tour with the Historical Society. On September 17th, I had a meeting with the Progressive Tribal Alliance, Donna Legge's Public Affairs, regarding Native American Recognition Month. It was a really good meeting with her. So that's a good relationship, I think, for the city to have. On the 20th, I did go to the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Legislative Meeting. And Assemblymember Damon Connolly shared District 12's updates. And right now, he says it's the time to, to send any bill ideas, any budget requests or anything. And there's a contest I didn't know that they have every year called their " ought to be a law." And they got like 3 million entries or something. And one of the entries was kind of like, no holiday ornaments before Halloween or something like that that they got. But he said that they've gotten a lot of really good ones and some of their bills come out of some of the, there ought to be a law contests that they have. There's 11 bills on the governor's desk right now to sign by December. And legislature is in special session right now over oil refinery pricing. Five bills were signed for a total of 5 million to district, to our district, 2 million for Terra de Rosas, which is new housing development in Roslyn. Lots of budget challenges and the climate bond proposition for, Prop 4, will be 10 billion, 135 million for structure and home arding. And also he talked about pending bills and I have information, if you want more information on pending bills. One thing that was interesting was AB 2416, which is the wildfire insurance, that they were shocked that that one did not get a vote in the Senate. But the speaker has said that they're going to bring it back next year as AB won next year. On the 21st, I did participate in Creek Week Cleanup at the Laguna with local residents and the city manager also. So we got in those creeks and did a lot of work that day. That was great. The same day in the afternoon, this Saturday, I went to the Rancho Katati High School Multicultural Celebration. I helped the committee. I was like an emcee providing bilingual. They were doing it in Spanish, so I'd say it in English. So I did a little emceeing. And I presented, I translated our Latino Heritage Month proclamation to Spanish. So I gave the proclamation a few times at the event. And a thank you to the city manager and also the police department for having some officers on one of the cars. They had a cute car show and a lot of vendors, a lot of the Mexican consulate was there. The high school band, all 80 members, played a couple of Mexican National Anthem for the Mexican consulate that was there. And the students were marching with the flag. I have a video of my Facebook, if anyone's interested in watching it. So it was a really cute event and the students even gave myself and city manager our own award for participating in the event. So we want to, I'm thankful for that. So thank you very much. That's all.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Gee, I don't have anything fantastic to report. On 9/11, I attended the mosquito and vector control meeting and there was nothing, you know, earth-shattering out of that. And then because there was nothing for the agenda, the Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled for this month. I have been out and about in the community and generally speaking, a lot of our community members are very satisfied with all of the improvements that, that we've been making. Of course, there are a few little complaints here and there, which I gladly handed to the city manager. But generally speaking, people are, are really pretty happy with what's going on. So that was good news. So I've already been to quite a few homes. All right, that's all.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, I don't actually have anything to report. I just want to thank those of you who put on and participated in the Creek Cleanup. I looked forward to it for months and then hurt my back last week, so I was unable to be there. But thank you to those of you who put it on and helped.
I was really looking forward to the event that you attended. And my husband had COVID all weekend, so I just stayed home so I didn't get anyone sick. And that's my excuse for the Creek Week too, but thank you for attending the, I wish I could have been there. So the only thing I have to report is the mayors and councilmembers' board meeting I attended. And Christine Sasco, who's overseeing the MICO program, came and made a presentation to the council, to the mayors that was pretty similar to what we heard when she came here. that was pretty similar to what we heard when she came here. There was more discussion among among the mayors about some of the concerns. And I I tried to bring forward the concern about how are we going to check that, you know, that they're really preparing and serving the food on the same day. And some of those things were discussed. She really reiterated that in a lot of the jurisdictions where this has already gotten online, they've had very few issues and and few complaints. So that was reassuring to hear. They did note that some of the ways that the county is adding in discretionary items that aren't built into the state legislation for the, I should say what this stands for. There's people in the audience, sorry, MECO stands for micro enterprise home kitchens, which is the ability for people to to cook and serve food in their home and then sell it out of their out of their home, either as delivery or or even consumed at their house. Anyhow, the the county is going to require business licenses if the MECO's in a jurisdiction that requires business licenses. So they would have to submit a business license in Katati or have one in Katati. And they're going to require landlord approval if it's a if it's a renter. And those are a couple discretionary items that the county is adding in. And there were there are a few other little things, but that's the main main point. And then the other thing that was on the agenda at that meeting was the street sweepers for bicycle for protected bicycle lanes. And originally, I thought we were going to have like a big discussion of this, but when it came up, the mayor of Petaluma, just Petaluma, we just bought our own sweeper and we're just going to have our staff do it. So they said it cost about $180,000 for the street for the sweeper, plus all the staff time to to operate it. So anyway, what came out of that is that the city manager for Warner Park kind of jumped in and said, well, maybe we could take this to the city managers' meeting and follow up and discuss. Because more and more cities are building these these dedicated separated bike lanes. And so got to figure out some solutions. So hopefully you'll all figure out how to solve this problem for us. So that's the end of my my report. Okay, anything else on that?
Maybe. Maybe Petaluma will do it for everyone.
Well, I asked him if we could borrow the the machine and he didn't really commit one way.
Good. Yeah, shared resources.
That brings us to our public action, public comment on non-action agenda items. And we don't have any closed session tonight, right? Okay, so this will be our last public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to comment on the non-action agenda items? Okay, yes.
I did just want to say I took part in the Creek Cleanup and it was great. Thank you to the city for organizing it. And it was great to see staff there and take part in it. And thank you for the T-shirt. And I did just want to say that I wanted to give a heads up once again to Paul Burke, who is a neighbor in our area who installed three bins. He wasn't there this weekend, but each of those bins was full and he empties them on a regular basis. So that just shows how much he single-handedly is keeping out of the section of the Laguna from East Katati to Commerce. The rest of what we picked up was perhaps three times as much as that, but he does, he picks those up every couple of weeks, I think, or at least every month. Anyway, that was it. And thank you very much for a great event.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment on non-action agenda items? Can we open it to Zoom, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. Mayor Sparks, that will end public comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. And was there any information? I believe there was some information received after the agenda was posted.
That is correct. There was a map for the Putnam Park project that was provided by the Director of Public Works. There were the documents regarding the letter for the pardon for the veteran. There was a public comment received. And I feel like there might have been one more item. No, never mind. That was it. There was three items for the veterans, the map of the park and the public comment. Those were all uploaded to the HTML agenda and available here in print in the chamber. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting before 8 o'clock.